Good evening, I am Cindy Jerome and it is my privilege to serve as your town moderator. Welcome to Dummerston's third annual Town Information Meeting. This is not a town meeting, there will be no voting this evening, no making of motions or amendments. Instead, this is an opportunity for Dummerston voters to ask questions about the articles on the town meeting warning and to meet candidates. Thank you to BCTV and our own zoning administrator Roger Gesitis, who is our Zoom tech guy for the evening. And he worked very hard to play this role and we are appreciative to Roger for that. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on BCTV. Again this year, you'll be voting every article on a paper ballot. Many of you have already called the town office and had your ballot mailed to you. You can still technically call and have your ballot mailed to you as late as this Friday, but I would suggest that you go pick one up. You can actually go to the town office during any normal business hours and vote right there and turn in your ballot. In any case, your ballot must be received at the town office by 7:00 PM next Tuesday, March 7th, which is voting day. In-person voting will occur that day on Tuesday, March 7th. Is that right? Have I got that right?
Yes, Tuesday.
Thank you. I copied and pasted from last year and forgot to change the date. It's at the town office, it is not at the school, and it's from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You can bring your absentee ballot, you should bring your absentee ballot if you requested one. There is one contested race for select board. Mark Craycom and Alex Wilson are both running for the two-year seat. We will start our meeting by inviting Mark and Alex to each spend two minutes introducing themselves and why they are running. Then we'll take a few questions for the candidates. Both the introductions and the answers to questions will be limited to two minutes and that time will be kept, thank you very much, by Terri Chapman. Then we'll hear from two candidates for the Wyndham Southeast School District. I want to emphasize, there are four Wyndham Southeast School District races, WSESD, and all of them are on our ballot. And they are on the ballots of every town in the district. One is a contested race for the school district seat that specifically represents Dummerston, and the candidates are Michelle Lucian-Green and Eva Nolan. Each will be given two minutes to introduce themselves and then they'll take a few questions. But I want to emphasize that all of the candidates, no matter what town they technically represent, will be on the ballot and you will be able to vote for them. You can read about them both in The Reformer and in The Commons. And after that, we're going to hear from Nader Hashim, our senator representing Wyndham County. And he's at the State House and wants to talk to us as he normally would at town meeting. And then we'll go through the articles on the warning, which is on page 66 of your town report. Lori, is it true that if you don't have your copy of the town report, you can find one at Dummerston.org? Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Lori. There is only one known error in the town report. Page four, Ann Nash's name was mistakenly omitted from the list of deaths filed. So we lost Ann this year. Tonight's information meeting is your opportunity to ask questions. It is not an opportunity to debate or lobby for votes. Sometimes there are Dummerston citizens attending who know a lot about a certain issue, such as a petitioned article. They may answer a question in a neutral manner, I will call on them, and certainly on members of the select board. You may speak only once on an article. You may speak a second time only if no one else wishes to speak a first time. So let's review how our Zoom meeting works. Please turn off your video and mute your microphone unless you are a member of the select board. If you are speaking because you are a candidate and you have been called upon, please do turn back on your video and your microphone. If you are joining by phone, you can use star six, both to mute and to unmute. Please make sure your name is displayed correctly, I think most everyone's is. It's great if we have a first and a last name. You can use a rename if you know how to do that. I'm not going to take the time to explain it though. Dummerston residents are welcome to ask questions. If you wish to speak, if you wish to ask a question, please use the raise hand feature that you'll see at the bottom. When you hover at the bottom of the screen of all our little videos, you'll see a button called reactions, and if you click on that, you'll see the raise hand. If you're joining by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine to raise your hand, and then again to lower it. The chat will be monitored for questions or comments on agenda items. I will try to keep track of that. If anybody else, Austin or any select board members, wants to pay attention to that, particularly if people put questions in the chat, alert me to that, that would be great. And I will call you by name to speak, and when I do that, please turn on your video and unmute your microphone. And please identify yourself when you start, people on the phone can't see your name. Thank you. Ask your question and then stop your video and mute your microphone again. We really want to avoid background noise, that just slows us down. Okay, let's start with the two candidates for the two-year select board seat, Mark Craycom and Alex Wilson. Mark will go in alphabetical order and start with your two-minute introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, this is Mark Craycom. There's not much to say. Everything's in print, so I won't bore you with a load of metal muffins. I'll be brief so we could move the meeting along. Thing I have to add is, I recently applied to the American Legion, be in the color guard, not only to honor our state, but also the country carrying the flags. I am seeking the honor of serving on the board. Board are town managers, not politicians. I operate on facts and figures, not political issues. I am a statesman and a state guard soldier. I do and will uphold the state statutes and the Vermont ways and traditions. Thank you for your time, stay well, safe, and God bless. Back to you, Madam Moderator, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for reminding me that there are statements in your views of Dummerston from the candidates for select board and for the candidates for the Dummerston seat for school board. So, thanks for that. Alex Wilson, and Mark, if you could re-mute yourself for star six, thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. My name's Alex Wilson, I live on Leonard Road in West Dummerston. I moved to Dummerston and the area in 1980 to lead a nonprofit organization based in Brattleboro, the New England Solar Energy Association. I did that for five years, then went out on my own, starting my own company, a writing company, now Building Green. We worked out of our home for a number of years until 1998, when we outgrew our industry, home industry permit, and moved into Brattleboro with five employees. We've been there ever since, with an average of about 15 employees. In 2005, I got involved with resilience work following Hurricane Katrina and launched the Resilient Design Institute a few years later, in 2012. On the volunteer side, I've tried to stay engaged. In the 1980s and 90s, I served for about a dozen years on the Planning Commission in Dummerston, at a time when it also included the Development Review Board. Since then, I helped at the Select Board's request launch the Energy Committee, and I chaired that for a number of years and have continued to serve on it. I've also served in various nonprofit organizations, the Vermont Nature Conservancy Chapter Board for nine years, Landmark Trust in Dummerston for six years, Green Mountain Conservancy, I'm on that board, the Retreat Farm in Brattleboro, and Friends of the West River Trail. Relative to being on the select board, you know, I think a lot of-
Madam Moderator, time's up.
Time's up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terri, sorry, Alex. Does anyone have any questions for Mark and Alex? I see Jody's hand, go ahead, Jody. Can turn on your video and your mic? You're muted again, and I don't see you. There you are. You're still muted.
I hit that.
There you go.
Am I here now? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. You know, I know both of these candidates are really busy people. And I want to know, number one, if they have the time to spend on these issues? And have you been attending board meetings so that you were up to date with the town issues? Thank you.
Alex, do you want to begin?
Yeah, I do feel I have time. I still have one foot in the door at Building Green in Brattleboro, but really it's been way less than a day, a week there. And my work with the Resilient Design Institute may be as much as half-time, probably less. I have not been attending meetings for the most part of the select board, but I did get a pretty good understanding of its operations when my wife, Carolyn, was on the board for six years. So I think I have a pretty good sense of what you do and the role you play.
Thank you. Mark, are you still with us? Mark Craycom? I don't see you anywhere, I wonder if you dropped off. Well, I guess Mark can't answer that question then. Are there any other questions that Alex could answer? I don't see any raised hands. I don't see anything in the chat. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and now we will move on and hear from Michelle Lucian-Green and Eva Nolan. Michelle, we'll start in alphabetical order again, and start with you. So two minutes for your introduction, please.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you for pointing out all of the places where we've been profiled by the media. I think that helps to be able to just go read the things that we've done. And it gives me a chance to just say hello and let you know who I am. I'm Michelle, I live on Green Mountain Camp Road. I have four children in our school systems, a third grader, a fifth grader, eighth and 12th grade now. And I've been your board representative for the last three years. I've worked very, very hard. I put a lot of time and energy into learning how to do this, into investing, into understanding the operations of our school system during a really challenging time. We just came together, you know, this newly emerged district, multiple new superintendents. It's been a challenging time as the board is also reorganized. And I've just, I've put my heart and soul into understanding. I joined in the Finance Committee because I know we need to understand how do we assess needs and how do we pay for things. My agenda is to support the people who work in our schools. I have great relationships with our administrators and our teachers, and I have so much respect for them. And I really think that when people feel seen and appreciated and valued, that they thrive and they do the best that they can do. And I think, you know, our family moved back to Vermont because we wanted our kids in the school system. We're starting off in such a great place. And so I've been really grateful to have this opportunity to learn so much and get to know everyone in this system on such a, you know, deeper level. And I'm wide open, I'm always available to have conversations. It's really interesting, fascinating work. And so I just, yeah, please take the time to go and read up a little bit about the work that we've done. I'm sure my opponent is lovely and quite capable. I think right now that the experience that I've had is going to be helpful for our community. So, you know, the choice is yours, just please do take the time to be informed and vote, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Eva Nolan? You're still muted, there you go.
Hi, everyone, and thanks so much for inviting me, I really appreciate it. My name is Eva Nolan, I moved to Vermont about nine years ago. I have two boys, they're ages two and five years old. One of them is going to be going to kindergarten this year at Dummerston. I received my bachelor's degree from Eastern Nazarene College in criminal justice. And I also was a community awareness and prevention educator with Boston Area Rape Crisis Center. In my position, I would go to colleges, speak with adolescents about how to be a bystander, how to be an effective bystander, and have kitchen table discussions that could be done at home. Since sexual allegations and sexual harassment is kind of the number one issue that's happening in our district right now, I feel that I feel a real calling to serve. And I have this time in my life where I can rely on my experience, my expertise, to really help and give voice to change. What I'm looking for to do is, I'm really looking for permanent change in the culture in regards to sexual harassment, sexual assault. And I think that's going to take not only education, but it's going to take a community effort. And I also would like to do proposals with the policy that the board can vote on that will create that permanent change. What I signify and what I feel I can offer is, I feel like I'm a new set of eyes. I feel like I'm a fresh set of eyes. I'm going to be coming into a board with trust that people can actually do the job and get it done.
Madam Moderator, time's up.
Thank you, Eva. I wonder now if we have any questions for the candidates. Jody, I see your hand up.
I can't get my picture on here.
Okay.
Does that really matter?
No, doesn't matter that much, we already saw you once, so go ahead.
All right. These are really different times from when I was growing up and when I was raising my kids. And so I would like to know from these two candidates, I know there's been a lot of issues on the boards. I'd like to know how you would handle inappropriate emails between school board members or inappropriate content using social media such as Facebook. Thank you.
So shall we start with Eva, please?
I think that as a representative for the public, I think it's important to conduct yourself in a professional manner, whether it be with emails or in person. So I think that if there are inappropriate emails, it is public domain and that information should be provided to the public. Because that's, it's not transparent and people are looking for transparency. So if there are inappropriate emails and people aren't conducting themselves professionally, it should be released to the public. And the public should evaluate whether or not this is somebody that is doing the job appropriately.
Thank you. Michelle, your answer.
Yeah, this is easy for me to answer because I've been in this situation and I had to do something that was brave. And I had to go to our chair and let the chair know that I was concerned we were breaking, we had violations of our code of ethics. Our board is being reorganized, it's young and needs training. We didn't have any association with the School Board Association. And when I became chair of the Supervisory Union Board, I had better access to legal support and professional services and really began to identify ways that we could be more transparent. When I began to sort of push to have these conversations, it wasn't received well and there was a lot of back and forth. And I do think, you know, we're real people, we're working together on things, and I didn't want to air anyone's dirty laundry or point fingers or shame anyone for making a mistake. Sometimes we get confused or we cross lines with open meeting law, as long as that we're willing to talk about it and acknowledge it and course correct. And so that was my effort, was to be brave and to say, this is something that we need to address, we can do better. You know, we need to talk to each other and be honest and authentic so that we can move forward, especially if there's moments where there's been disrespect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any other questions for the school board candidates? Raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Okay. Well, Nader, you're in luck. We're going to hear from Nader now and then we'll go over the articles.
Fantastic, thank you so much. So for those of you I haven't met yet, my name is Nader Hashim, I live in Dummerston as well. And, you know, I do just want to take a moment to thank all of the candidates who have put their names out there. I know it's not easy, whether you're running for local office or state office, whatever it is, it's a tough road, and I appreciate all of you putting the time in to help our community. And so, you know, I wanted to just take this time to update folks, all of you, and share a bit about the work that I've been doing in both of my committees. And, oh, actually, one note, just so all of you know, there's actually a concert happening on the second floor of the State House. So there's a lot of members of the public moving around right now in the State House, which is great, but just in the event that we get interrupted, I apologize, and just wanted you folks to know. But anyways, you know, one of the things I want to start off by sharing is that the legislature has seen its highest amount of new legislators in the state's history. And of the 180 total legislators, 80 of them are brand new. And this creates a situation that I feel has both positive and negative implications. As a result of these new members, we're taking things a bit slower than we have in the past. But I also think there's a benefit to taking the time to make sure things are done right and that the members are educated about the decisions that they're making. So I serve on two committees. I serve as the vice chair of the Judiciary Committee in the morning, and I serve as a member of the Education Committee in the afternoon. So I describe the Judiciary Committee as the place where we handle either highly controversial topics such as reproductive rights, firearms, or criminal law, to the more mundane but still important topics like powers of attorney, real estate transfers, and estate administration. One of my top priorities before entering this committee was to help address the backlog of cases, both in the criminal and civil divisions. We're still doing work within two different bills on how to reduce the number of hearings that arise in order to shorten the amount of time that people spend in litigation, especially within the Youthful Offender Program, which is an important program but has led to a substantial increase in the court backlog. And I don't want to get too lost into the weeds about the different mechanisms that we're making to these different chapters in law, but if you would like further details, I'll put my email in the chat and make sure that we can get in contact and I can go into the details with you. Some of the other bills we voted out involve prohibiting law enforcement from using deception on juveniles in custody, banning paramilitary training camps, creating a state law that prohibits straw man purchases of firearms and defacing serial numbers on firearms. For those of you who may not know, a straw man purchase is when an individual who is disqualified from purchasing a firearm convinces someone else to purchase a firearm for them, typically in exchange for drugs. And in my afternoon committee on education, a quick note, Jody Normandow, I know I owe you an email, I'm going to get to that on Saturday. So, but I'm also happy to talk about your email that you sent if you have a question. But anyways, in the Education Committee, we're covering a wide range of topics. And two of the priorities that I'll discuss involve school construction and universal school meals. So regarding school construction, we have not built a new school in this state for over 20 years. There's also a moratorium that was put in place back in 2007, which we are considering repealing as well. We've held conversations with other states such as Rhode Island, who've successfully addressed their infrastructure issues. And we've also had conversations with our new treasurer, Mike Pechek, about bonding for municipalities and the different pathways we can take to fund school construction and renovation. And we're also having conversations with our federal delegation about what sort of interface and resources we can get from the federal government, too. And regarding-
Madam Moderator, four-minute warning.
Okay, I will move a bit, I'll move forward here. We're also focusing on universal school meals. Universal school meals have had a significantly positive impact on students in Vermont, and it's been a great benefit to our local farmers who are provided with a reliable source of income that comes from the schools that they work with. The committee is largely in agreement about universal school meals, but we're exploring different ways in which we can pay for it. And just move a bit forward here for the sake of time. And I'll talk about some other issues we're working on outside of our committees. I know housing is a major issue all around our state. We have a large housing bill that will be coming out of the Economic Development Committee soon, which makes substantial investments in building out infrastructure for housing developments, apartment buildings, and increased subsidies for middle-income families to either build or purchase new homes. There are also some changes to Act 250 that will be coming in through that. And we also have a childcare bill, it's S-56 that we're working on, that has a two-pronged approach to make it easier for childcare providers to pay their employees well and also be able to afford running a private childcare business, but also focusing on making sure that families are not paying more than 10% of their income when it comes to paying for childcare. And I know that I've been somewhat vague about some of these issues. The reason that I am is because a lot of these issues or a lot of these bills are still subject to change. You know, we still have crossover on March 17th, where bills are still going to get modified by the House and then come back to the Senate, and then of course, the governor also has to sign it. And I will conclude there, and I just want to say, it's, you know, it's only been about two months now that I've been up here, and I'm incredibly happy and grateful to be back in Montpelier. And this is definitely, I'm not trying to be dramatic or exaggerating here, but this is the best job that I've had so far in my life. So, thank you again for giving me the time and opportunity to speak here. And, well, I will be sticking around because I live here too and I'm curious about what we're going to talk about later on. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Nader, I'm sorry we cut you a little short. I think I might have confused you, Terri, on how long Nader had.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said four.
No, we were thinking up to 10, but let's see-
Oh, sorry!
It's okay.
That's all good. If, one last thing, if it's okay, I'll put my email into the chat. And if any folks want to reach out to me, I'm happy to correspond. I try to handle emails over the weekend because I'm in the State House from about 7:30 AM until 8 o'clock at night, and I do have to find a few minutes in the day for myself. So usually I'll get back to you over the weekend and, yeah, put my email in the chat.
That would be great. And if anybody has a question for Nader, I think we've certainly got time for one or even two. I don't see any raised hands. Okay. Well, thank you, Nader, thanks for speaking with us. Okay. And so now we are going to go to the articles. Article one, of course, is voting for candidates, so there's no need to review those. Candidates who have not spoken but are on the ballot are running unopposed. Article two is regards to accepting the auditor's report. We won't be discussing that. Article three is authorizing the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes. We won't be discussing that. But Article four, Maria, if you'd like to present that, please.
Sure, Article four reads, "Shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $25,000 through taxes and appropriate- and appropriate set amount to the capital fund for future capital needs? I don't know if there's questions on that or not.
Well, I wonder if you might want to direct us to the page in the annual report that covers capital needs and mention, I believe, the ideas we normally set aside quite a bit more. But this year we'd like to redirect some of that money, if I got that right?
Yes. So page 32 of the town report. And we normally set aside or, or ask to, to appropriate around 140, 150,000 dollars. And this year we're only asking for $25,000 because later on in the, in the, another article, article eight, is where we shifted some of these funds to the highway structures fund. We did this because we only were asking for $25,000 because this particular fiscal year, there were no expenditures to be coming out of the capital fund for, for the fiscal year.
But we do need more money for highway structures and so that kind of adds up. All right. Any questions for Maria about that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to article five. And I believe Paul Derry is presenting this. Paul, if you'd like to unmute and turn your video on. While you're doing that, Paul, I will read the article, shall the voters authorize the purchase of a fire truck at a price not to exceed $500,000 and to authorize the financing of said fire truck through promissory notes not to exceed a term of five years and to authorize payment of debt service from the capital fund commencing in fiscal year 2025, 2026. Go ahead, Paul.
Yep, like that permission by our fire truck. And since they're 20 months out of bill, getting a fire truck delivered to us, if we could order it, if we get the permission from the townspeople, order it now. And so it'll be in the time the truck would be scheduled to come in on the budget. And the town would have no payment down until the truck is delivered to the fire department.
You want to direct us anywhere in the report? Do we have, I guess we don't necessarily, well, we do, on page 31, I see, Rick. West Dumerson Volunteer Fire Department Engine Apparatus. So we would be replacing
Nine engine three, the 1999 Freightliner.
All right, which has 1,700 hours on it.
Yes.
At the end of last year and I bet it's gotten more since then.
Yes.
Well, I shouldn't appear to be anything but neutral on the fire truck, but I thought I'd mention that. Any questions for Paul or for Rick? Okay, seeing no hands raised. We'll move on to article six and I think that's Zeke.
Okay. And article six reads, shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $536,120, of which 374,431 dollars shall be raised by taxes and $161,689 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. And if you have your town reports, you can turn to page 27. And that's where we have, we've listed the, where we are proposing spending that money. And I may just be a little too close to this process. We began working on the budget back in October, but I don't recall any real exceptionally or blockbuster items in this budget. But you can go down and see that health insurance has increased about 14%. Most of our insurance policies that we have in town have gone up. We have done about a 4% increase in wages for town employees. The treasurer, Charlotte Anis, has done an incredible amount of work on FEMA cost and also the ARPA funds. And so we gave her, thought she needed a little extra bump there. So she's getting about a 6% increase. Let's see, going down, most of the committees and boards in town, for the most part, level funded where they could. If you go down, the sheriff's department, that has gone up a little bit. Our hourly cost of having the sheriff in town, rescue has gone up a little. Our emergency management expenses, the select board took over emergency management responsibilities a couple of years ago when Don Hubbard retired. Since then, it's gotten a little more demanding than we felt we could handle reasonably. And last year, we had Marty Farret and Louis White take on some of the responsibilities. They're our official emergency management directors now. So they're attending meetings and keeping up on all of the new regulations and opportunities that are coming through on that. Our health and welfare, the social services committee has put together a budget of $14,000 and divided it among a list of organizations that have, we've been working with for a number of years now. Cemetery is going up. And I believe that's some trees that might need some trimming. And Terry, you could maybe speak to that.
Yeah, that's going to be some trees, but also this is, we're going into, we've been doing two-year contracts with lawn mowing. And so this year it's coming up. And so of course that went up along with everything up. So between the combination, that's where you're seeing the cemetery is at.
Okay. Um, let's see, the library asked for about $3,000 more and that's their $18,834. Under the conservation section, we usually look forward to a spirited debate at town meeting, the in-person town meetings to, the select board usually wants to have one figure and the public usually tries to amend that to have, increase it. And we go back and forth for an hour or two. And then we decided where we were not going to have an in-person meeting this year. We would just cut to the chase and increase it to what we thought would be an amendment on the floor. So we've gone from the 5,000 we would have put in and increased it to 7,000. County tax, that's a tax, all the towns in the county pay, helps sheriff department cost and the superior court cost, among other things. So that's about it. What, we've got about a 113,000 dollar increase. Oh, sorry, no, a 77, oh, my notes are down wrong. Let's see, I can't take that back, but it's 113,000 dollar increase. Oh, I'm, I'm still messed up. That's for the highway department. A $36,000 increase for the municipal budget.
General fund, yes.
General fund. So any questions?
Any questions on the general fund? Which Zeke just reviewed. I see no hands raised.
I wonder if any of the other members on the board have anything they'd like to add.
I think you pretty much covered it, Zeke. It's supposed to, a lot of insurance and wages, the only, you know, the only thing you could add was that the animal control contract went up slightly because we've got more member towns, but we went by population this year. Um, that's been a, a brand new thing that we've started and we got in on the second year and excuse me? So I can't add anything unless somebody else wants to add something.
Well, I think the, am I, am I off mute?
You are, David. We hear you.
Okay, the, the board really works hard to keep costs as low as possible. We, we really make a special effort. And I think despite the fact that certain things went up, that were beyond our control, I think we've done a pretty good job at holding the line as, as well as we did.
Thank you, David. Paul Normandow, I think you tried to raise your hand. You were applauding and that's why it went away. But if you have a question, please turn on your video if you can and go ahead.
Well, you don't really need my video if I can't, oh, there it comes. Thank you. Thank you very much. I was sort of looking at the total budget, both highway and general fund. And looking at it, and I think those are the numbers that Zeke was looking for, the 76,000 or 77,000, almost 77,000 increase as depicted on page 23 of the town report. I know, I know that it's 76,240 something dollars, but that represents about an eight and a half percent increase in the amount that you're going to be raising for taxes. And, excuse me, and which is a fairly sizable increase in the tax, the taxes that will be raised. And my question would come, where, where would you see about, you know, trimming that back so that the tax burden increase wouldn't be so high? And secondly, the 125,000 dollars that was in a previous article for fu- future structures work, is that speculative or does this board have, what does the board have in mind about where that 125,000 dollars is going to be spent? Thank you very much.
Okay, Paul, we haven't gotten to article eight yet about the highway structures fund. We referenced it when talking about the capital fund as the reason why we're raising so much less. And before we talk about the bottom line tax bill, let's have Zeke go through the highway fund. And then let's also look not just at the increase in total expenditures, but also at how much tax dollars we're raising and what that increase is. I'm not sure it's eight and a half percent. You okay with that? But hold me to account if we don't get to those questions.
Yeah, I, I, I do. Yeah, I have, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
But on page, but excuse me, on page 23, it does say that that's what the increase will be on what you are going to raise for taxes. Just, just as a side, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Zeke, do you want to go ahead and Paul, if you can turn off your video as well, thanks. Can, you want to go ahead and I got a comment that it was difficult to hear you. So if in presenting the highway budget, you can speak more loudly or closer to your mic, that'd be great.
Sure. Okay, I'll do my best. Uh, let's see, article seven, shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $661,693, of which 427,150 dollars shall be raised by taxes and 234,543 dollars by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. And you'll find your highway budget on page 24. So some of the highlights in here, wages went up 4%. You could see crushing gravel, chloride, those went up significantly. It used to be when we would meet a town meeting, 80,000, 90,000, used to pave about a mile of road. And we're finding that that doesn't get much more than a half mile of road these days. So we've increased that from 96,000 to 120,000. And if we kept on with our 90, 96,000 number there, each year it'd be less and less. We're responsible for 12 miles of paved roads in Dumerson. And they're on a schedule and if we get too far behind, if we're not able to get through them, the schedule we're on now calls for re-treating each road about every 10 years. And so if we fall behind, not being able to pave close to a mile, the road conditions will not, you know, they'll deteriorate. So we've tried to boost that and Lee is looking for some state funds to supplement that. You can see salt and sand have gone up. Garage supplies increasing. And that's just like everything else when you go to the store now. Prices for equipment, light bulbs, everything has, has gone up. That reflects there. Diesel fuel has gone up significantly. And we're hoping that the 63,000 that we budgeted will be enough for that fiscal year. We're just crossing our fingers on that one. So that, the increases are 77,738 dollars over last year's budget for the highway department. Let's see. And of course, over on the next page, the previous page, page 23, what Paul was referring to, the summary of municipal taxes. You can see what was voted on last year and what we're proposing this year. So you can see the general fund going up, taxes to be raised for the highway fund actually decreasing somewhat, and that's due to a higher surplus that we're able to put into the highway budget. Last year, we had quite a 90,000 plus surplus that we were able to put into the general fund. And that lowered the taxes that we needed to raise this year. This year, the surplus going into the general fund is only in the $50,000 range. So we're coming up short there. So that, you know, just increases, oh, not as high a surplus for the general fund. So that accounts to some of the cost increase that we're looking at as far as raising taxes.
Thank you, Zeke. I'm sorry, are you done?
Uh, other members may want to.
I think we can, one of the reasons why we got the, the higher surplus last year in, instead of this year is because of the hard work of Charlotte, who, who Ray got a lot of the back taxes in, and in, there wasn't as many to collect this year. So, you know, there's the lower surplus.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember too that we are, we have been in an inflationary period for the last, uh, eighteen months, uh, a general inflationary period that perhaps is coming under control now. But this, this is something that has affected most of the items in the, in the, uh, in the general fund and highway fund too.
Okay, unless another select board member has a comment, I will call on Jody Normandow.
Me again. Um, this is not in your bailiwick, um, Zeke, but speaking of paving, does the Select Board of Dummerston have any sway with the state to fix that Route Five, that it's worse than it was begun? I know we all know about it. Um, has the Select Board done any communication with the state, V-Trans on fixing that?
Right. Uh, they tell us that they're going to fix it, um, once warm weather, uh, comes, when the winter's over. They said, uh, what they did, uh, this past fall was just a skim coat to prep it for work to be done, um, uh, later this spring or summer. Um. It is pretty bad. We're, um, uh, we're not likely to, um, hire them to do any paving on our town roads, uh, but, um. So we, we have mentioned it, and we've gotten the story that, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, wait, wait till the spring and they're going to make it all great, look great again. Although it is, it is, you know, it's, um, it was better before they did what they had done. Everybody knows that.
Thank you, Zeke. I see Katie Berg's hand. Katie, if you want to unmute yourself and turn on your video, and Jody, if you can do the opposite.
Yes, thank you. So I, I see the price of diesel fuel has gone up tremendously. And I'm wondering if there's any consideration of, um, replacing the gasoline and diesel-powered vehicles with electric vehicles.
As far as I know, there aren't electric vehicles, um, you know, uh, ten-yard dump trucks that are electric yet. So that's um, maybe sometime in the future that we can look forward to that, but it's not there yet. So we're have to rely on, you know, diesel engines for the time being.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, just to respond to that, the Energy Committee did meet with Lee, uh, a couple of months ago and brought that up. Not for the big vehicles, but if there are opportunities for having a smaller vehicle that goes and looks at project needs. Um, and, you know, we talked about it, and indeed, as Zeke mentioned, there are not electric vehicles for bigger trucks. But Lee said that, you know, he'll keep following what's happening in the industry. So nothing in the near term, and there isn't really use for a lightweight vehicle. You know, all the, the smallest vehicles are one-ton dump trucks.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else with a question relevant to the highway budget? Okay, let's move on to Article Eight. Maria?
Sure. Article Eight reads, shall the voters authorize raising the sum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars through taxes and appropriate set amount to the Highway Structures Fund for future structures projects? So, and that you will find on page twenty. And the reason why we increased this amount, this is where we put less into the capital fund, and we decided to shift it over to the Highway Structures Fund. Um, our thinking was there was no expenditures in the capital fund. This gave us the perfect opportunity to build the Structures Fund up, which with the storm damage that we had, um, and even though we qualified for FEMA, we had to pay out all of that. So this was giving us an opportunity, uh, to increase the Structures Fund in the event that there was another natural disaster in the future. And we could then use that money, this money, for future structures that may possibly be damaged due to a natural disaster. Um, there's not a particular project that, that, this is earmarked for.
Maria, after we all know just what's, I'm not sure we all know just what's meant by highway structures. Would you mind explaining that?
Sure. Highway structure is our roads, um, our bridges, culverts, um, and, and just our general roads in, in general. Does that make sense? I don't know if Lee is on this evening. He may have more details or not. Maybe he's not with us.
As you're aware, during, during the storm, uh, various storms, uh, sometimes the culverts get completely washed away and they have to be destroyed and have to even.
All right. Thank you, David. Any questions for Maria or about this article? Um, Paul Normandow, I think you're raising your hand. Are you just saying yes, that that sounds good? It's a thumbs up.
Uh, no. I, I can't seem to find the right hand, uh, to, uh, to put up. So I tried whatever looked like a hand. Uh, so, uh, as I understand what, uh, what Maria is saying is that this is basically a reserve fund in anticipation of something that might happen. Is, is that correct?
Ye- yes. Um, that, that's what our thinking was on this, because when the storm damage occurred, was it twenty-twenty-one, I think it was, um, it, it, it cost the town, uh, more than two-hundred thousand dollars. And we were fortunate that we were able to, to expend that money and now, and wait for FEMA to reimburse us for that without having to take out a loan. Um, so we were fortunate that we were able to do that. But future, we may not have that option, and we have, we might have to take out a loan. So the board's thinking was that if we could build up this Structures Fund in the event of a natural disaster, we would have the funds to cover the expenses while we waited for the reimbursement from FEMA. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Well, it does, although I wonder about the, um, I wonder about, uh, if that's a prudent way to go, to use dollars, because uh, it's cheaper to borrow money, and municipalities borrow, borrow money very, very inexpensively relative to the rest of us. And when you're looking at a year that has an eight and a half percent increase in your tax rate, uh, it would seem to me that, um, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be taking that much money aside, uh, because if you have an, uh, if you have an actual event, and it does cost you a couple hundred thousand dollars, the town can probably borrow for four or five percent. Probably today you can borrow for, you know, I, I don't know exactly what it would be. My guess would be, it would be probably, uh, in that range, three to five percent. And, uh, so three to five percent on a, say, a two-hundred thousand dollar item is only, is only, uh, six to ten thousand dollars. So, uh, that's a lot cheaper than, uh, using a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars and just setting it aside. Uh, and, and if you put it in a savings account, you can probably get three to four percent on it. Uh, so, uh, I'm just wondering about the, the idea of doing that. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Seeing no other hands. Let's move on to Article Nine, and that's Terry.
Okay, it reads, shall the voters authorize raising the sum of twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars through taxes and appropriate such set amount to the highway blasting and led crushing reserve fund for future blasting and crushing? So a few years back, we set up this highway blasting and crushing fund because we are going to, I believe it's, it'd be two more cycles, this cycle and one more year, and we are going to have to blast to get more gravel. So, um, what happened was last year we put in nineteen thousand, ninety-six dollars. And because of inflation again, Lee worked with Putney, and, um, they went through it because what we put in is the exact same amount as what Putney puts in, and based on inflation, and we only have two more years before we blast, they're hoping the figure is to go up to twenty-six thousand, six-fifty-nine to cover the cost so that at that time when we blast, we're not going to be way short. So that's why the increase there.
Thank you, Terry. Are there any questions for Terry? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to Article Ten. And unless there's someone else who wants to speak for the Grange, but there generally isn't, I think I'm calling on David Backsendale to move to, um, report in on this.
Well, the, uh, Article Ten reads, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title Thirty-two, Section Thirty-eight, Forty? I think we all know in town the service that the Grange provides to our community uh, in terms of a gathering place, uh, and, uh, so much more. And, uh, we think this is an appropriate exemption.
All right. Thank you, David. I'm scanning the names for Mark Brown, and I don't see his name, so I'll ask you to go ahead with Article Eleven as well. I'm assuming there are no questions on the Evening Star Grange.
Okay, so. Okay, Article Eleven, uh, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title Thirty-two, Section Thirty-eight, Forty? Uh, Green Mountain Camp has been the institution in our community for over a hundred years. They provide, uh, uh, excellent opportunities for young girls to, uh, uh, have an experience in the summer, uh, you know, young, young girls from our community, from Dummerston and some other surrounding communities. Um, and we think that that's a, an appropriate exemption to grant.
Thank you. Any questions about that? And we'll move on to Article Twelve.
Article Twelve is, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to the West Dummerston Volunteer Fire Department for a period of five years pursuant to the provisions of Title Thirty-two, Section Thirty-eight, Forty? Uh, I mean, enough said. I think, uh, we believe that the West Dummerston Fire Department is a vital part of our community, and they certainly should have that exemption.
All right. Thank you, David. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Then Katie Berg, would you like to go ahead with the Advisory Non-Binding Resolution? If you'll read it to us and then make any explanation you care to.
Okay, thank you. Um, whereas Dummerston Cares supports equity and social engagement and in governance, its Board of Trustees calls for the voters of Dummerston to adopt a Declaration of Inclusion. Therefore, we resolve that the people of Dummerston welcome all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, differing ability, economic status, and education. We commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. We value respectful civic engagement in all forums. And I have to say that there was a typo that we overlooked. Uh, the last word of this resolution should be forums, F-O-R-U-M-S, meaning gatherings or meetings. So, um, I'm happy to, I could, I could give some history or I could answer questions if anybody has them.
Are there any questions for Katie? Diane E. Larson Freeman.
Long name. Excuse me, I have laryngitis, and so I hope you can hear me okay.
We can.
But I would like to speak, um, for the Declaration of Inclusion and make a couple of comments if I can. Uh, first of all, I heard about.
I'm going to just interrupt you and say that because this is an information meeting, we're trying to avoid, um, speaking strongly in favor or against. But if, if you can, um, share your, your opinions in a more or less neutral tone, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder, Cindy. I, I guess the information I'd like to divulge is the fact that I, how can I say this neutrally? I was surprised that Dummerston did not, had not already adopted this um, declaration. And so I attended a meeting that Mike Maricki organized, and I learned a lot about it. Um, and learned that the Select Board had decided to put the adoption in the hands of the Dummerston voters. And as I reflected on that, it made a lot of sense to me that if it is a Declaration of Inclusion, that all voters, um, in Dummerston should have a right to say whether it should be adopted or not. It just seemed to me that it was in keeping with the ethos of the community. I don't know how neutral that was, but that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
That was just fine, Diane. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this or has a question for Katie? Okay, we still have some time left. If anyone else has a question, a point of information that they'd like to ask. Jody, I see your hand.
Excuse me. All I would like to do is put on my Dummerston Historical Society hat and thank the Select Board for all of the help through the ARPA funds that they have given our society and the old schoolhouse to bring it up to snuff as far as insulation and, and heat pumps and back doors that had cracks in them and, you know, I mean, we probably could have spent the whole fund if we kept going. But, um, they were very, very pleasant to us to allow us to have what we requested because um, we're a voluntary organization, we're a nonprofit organization, and, um, there's not a lot we can do to raise funds. And we'd like to have and hope to have more in-person meetings. We've had them by Zoom, and they've been very well attended, um, interesting things about Dummerston. So thank you, Select Board, from the Dummerston, um, Historical Society.
I wonder if I could ask the Select Board to do an article in the Views at some point that describes the amount of ARPA funds, the dollar amount we've gotten, and what we've done so far and what we're considering and, um, perhaps make it, yes.
Sorry. Cindy, I'm the one to do the views next time. So, and I'm kind of the overseer of the little bit of the ARPA, you know, paperwork. So I'd be glad to write up an article for the Views for that.
Thank you. That'd be wonderful. Great. Okay. I saw Deborah Stanford's hand first. I'll call on you.
Um, thank you. I'm, I, you know, I'm very appreciative of, um, the article for inclusion and equity. But I'm wondering, besides a statement that exists in numerous communities, um, how does that change? how does that change code of conduct or how business is conducted?
I wonder, Katie, if you want to speak to that? I mean, I'm thinking that this is something being proposed by Dummerston Cares. I'm not sure that Dummerston Cares has thought about how this might change the things you're asking about, Deborah. But go ahead, Katie.
Okay, so the the idea of this is to present this kernel of inclusion in towns across the state. And over 95 towns have already adopted this. The governor created the a Declaration of Inclusion for the state in May of 2021. And now honors that with Inclusion Week every second week of May. This idea first is is publicized and voted on, approved. And then it's up to people to work in a town with, you know, with good intentions, perhaps to review any wording in personnel or hiring procedures, that type of thing. There are opportunities for people to perhaps start a committee of equity and inclusion. This is intended to work with the community and with the Select Board in order to make our town appealing, in order to make Vermont appealing. People who are not in the majority can sometimes feel overlooked, unwelcome. And yet we need the talents of everybody in the state in order to be a vibrant state. And to that point, the Vermont Chamber of Commerce overwhelmingly supported this and just said how important a Declaration of Inclusion is for economic success, for welcoming people, for filling jobs that go unfilled right now. I don't know if I've answered that in enough detail.
Thank you, Katie. I see a hand raised by Lynn Levine and Cliff Adler. You could unmute yourselves and show yourself. And Katie, if you can reverse that. Thanks.
Hi Cindy, thanks. Listening to Paul Normandoe, I don't want to talk about the Highway Structures Fund, but I'm just sort of feeling and being reminded that were we together in town, in person town meeting, we might make an amendment. We might have discussion. And more broadly, that's certainly applicable to much more than just that particular thing. Just want to remind us that we're not together. We are the only town in this immediate area that is not in person. That's what I wanted to share and remind us of.
Thank you, Cliff. I will shed the neutrality for a moment and say I understand that comment and I do miss being together and having the discussions that are possible then. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none? I will thank you for your time.
One comment?
Yes, please, Zeke.
Okay. We, when we had to make, the legislature gave permission to towns to this. When we, we had to make a decision by a certain time in January. And the way it was looking at the time and the feedback we got from people who did get in touch with us, we decided, we made the choice that was safer to do this by Australian ballot for this year. And hopefully we'll be able to meet in person next year. But we felt meeting in person with disenfranchised people who were afraid to go to the gymnasium and sit there with everyone else. It gets pretty stuffy in there. And it just seemed a little safer to do it this way. And we like that with the Australian ballot, more people can weigh in on the budget items and the articles on the warning. So I don't know.
Well, thank you, Zeke. I'll mention in support of your argument that the town of Dummerston population does skew a little older. And it's older people who are more at risk from COVID. So that may have played a part in the decision as well. I see Alex Wilson's hand.
Not having heard it from someone else, I just wanted to remind people of Lori Frichette's message that there's a celebration tomorrow for Jean Newell for her amazing 20-plus year service to the town. You know, when we met in person, we were able to celebrate people more effectively. And we'll do that in person at perhaps risk of COVID. But I plan to be there.
Thank you, Alex, for that reminder. And I see Michelle Lucian Green's hand.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to quickly remind everybody that the school district budget is its own separate vote. They are actually, we have, our public hearing will be on March 14th. It's a Tuesday. And on March 21st, the vote for the school budget, it's about $62 million this year. It is an in-person vote. There is, there is childcare offered. I appreciate the consideration, actually, to having Australian ballot. But this isn't the direction that the board went this year. So I just wanted to make sure that was on people's radar, that if they wanted to be able to vote, it is in person on March 21st. I think that there'll be more information shared and Lori will send out with the details of the time and the place. But I just wanted to put that on everyone's radar.
Michelle, I may not have been paying close enough attention. I thought you said March 14th and then the 21st?
March 14th is the public hearing, so our information session. And the 20th will be the actual vote in person, our annual meeting. Yeah. And there is, the annual report is, should be available. I believe that they send them to our town clerk's offices and then they can be picked up at Central Office, too. But I believe they usually send a stack to the town as well for more information.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We've reached the conclusion of our meeting. Thank you all for your participation. Remember to vote by next Tuesday. And do stay safe. Thank you.